This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
I'd like to call the May 9, 2024 Regular Meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30. May I have a motion to approve April 11, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting Minutes? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Do I have to abstain?
No.
For that reason thing?
No, that's okay. So moved. May I have a motion to approve the April 30, 2024 Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So moved. We have no student reps tonight. It's getting close to end of year. They're doing a lot of studying and getting ready for AP and finals. And so good luck to those, you know, students. Well, I'd like to move forward to the non-agenda public comment. So if you have anything you'd like to talk about that is not on the agenda, feel free to come up to the mic, me, your name and your address and...
Krista Kaplan, 14...
It's for that.
I would go set. Krista Kaplan, 14, Governors Drive. I'm here as a parent, as a town resident, as a teacher, and as the president of the North Haven Education Association tonight. First and foremost, as it is Teacher Appreciation Week, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge and publicly thank the dedicated teachers and staff we have here in North Haven. Your time, dedication, support, and love that you pour into our schools and into our children does not go unnoticed. Second, I've spent the past several months attending PTA meetings across town to publicly thank Superintendent Stark, Assistant Superintendent Melinda McKenna, and COO Christian Strickland and the board for putting together and bringing forward a strong budget increase request this year. Over the past 20 years that I have been following the budgets in North Haven, this has been the truest and strongest budget request we have seen in years. So thank you for that. That being said, as the proud parent, teacher, and leader of our local teachers' union, I'm here today with you as an urgent plea for your support in an upcoming event that holds the paramount importance for the future of education in our beloved town of North Haven. On May 21, our community will be voting on the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And at the heart of this budget lies the allocation for education. This vote is not merely about numbers on a balance sheet. It's about the future of our children, our schools, and the fabric of our community. As educators, we understand better than anyone the critical role that education plays in shaping young minds and preparing them for the challenges of tomorrow. We've dedicated our lives to nurturing the potential of each and every student who walks through our school doors, and that impact reverberates far beyond the confines of our classrooms. But now we face the pivotal moment where the very foundation of our educational system may be at stake. The proposed budget represents not just a financial plan, but a statement of our values as a community. It's a reflection of our commitment to providing our students with the resources, support, and opportunities that they need to thrive. If this budget is approved, it will enable us to maintain crucial programs, retain talented educators, and invest in the tools and technology that are essential for modern education. It will also ensure that our schools remain beacons of excellence, where every child has a chance to reach their full potential, regardless of their background or their circumstances. However, if the budget is rejected, the consequences could be dire. We may be forced to make painful cuts to essential services, increase class sizes, or reduce vital education programs that we've worked hard to put in place. The ripple effects of such decisions can be felt for years to come, impacting not only our students, but our entire community. That's why I implore you, my fellow parents, educators, and community members, to stand with me in support of the budget referendum. Your voices carry tremendous weight because of your deep-rooted commitment to the well-being of our students and our community. Please take the time to educate yourselves about the proposed budget, and on May 21, cast your vote in support of education. Encourage your friends, family members, and neighbors to do the same. Together, we can ensure that North Haven remains a place where every child has an opportunity to learn, grow, and succeed. Board members, Superintendent Stark, Assistant Superintendent Melinda McKenna, and COO Strickland, thank you for your unwavering dedication to the cause of education and for your continued support in this crucial endeavor. And I just want to really reiterate that to the public that budget referendums in this town are woefully unattended. And with the numbers that we're trying to propose this year, it's going to be crucial that everybody does come out to vote. As I said, I've visited as many PTA meetings as possible, and I've been working with local PTAs to try to get notice out to parents to remind them of the date, especially since the date changed. And as an association, NHEA has sent out 440 letters within town to encourage any educator or retired educator that lives in town to make sure that they're coming out to support the budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up and speak? Good.
Hi, Tim Gabriel, 18, Renee Lane. Just wanted to come up here as a parent and just say that I fully support the teachers and the budget this year. And I encourage everybody to come out on May 21 as well and vote in favor of the budget so that we don't face any further cuts to education.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We're going to be having a presentation by Caitlin Ortiz for the proposed section of the Science of Reading, K-5 Reading Program.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to start us off and then turn it over to Caitlin after, and then this will be my report for the evening.
Great.
In March, we shared with you information regarding compendium and comprehensive literacy programs to comply with the state statutes around science of reading. So at that time, we were most excited about the compendium program Bookworms. And since that time, we've done a lot of work visiting other districts, speaking with teachers who are using those materials in their schools and other districts that are in the same kind of crossroads in terms of making decisions that we are. We also compiled all of the teacher and parent surveys that were sent out, and data from those surveys kind of framed our non-negotiables and our criteria for looking at different programs and guiding the work of our literacy planning committee, who truly is just so outstanding, made up of classroom teachers, special education teachers, administrators, coordinators, principals. It really was a very cohesive, hard-working team that we had honest, open discussion throughout the whole time. And after researching all of the programs that the state has put forward and digging into was compendium or comprehensive the way to go, we've fully felt that the compendium piece is the best match for us because it allows us to build off some of the successful practices that we already have in place. And those include Hegarty and Ufly, which we use for our phonemic awareness and our phonics instruction. So it would be adding on kind of that third layer of the stool with something new, but we have the other two already in place. And we also liked that this program mirrors a lot of the instructional pieces we already have in order now, like where we do small group instruction, where we value authentic text. And so we felt like this one was like the most natural of the shifts. So we are asking tonight to move forward with Bookworms for K-3 for next year, full implementation as our comprehension component to accompany the Ufly and Hegarty. And then in 4th and 5th grade, we would like to pilot one unit for next year and then go from there building those out. And the rationale behind, originally, we went into it thinking, okay, full K-5 rollout and, you know, let's go with that. The rationale is that we're a little bit, there's so much in these materials that we want to be able to really make sure that we are auditing them the right way, that we are making them teacher-friendly, that we are providing the professional learning that our teachers deserve, and we're readying our students appropriately. So we have a plan in place to kind of do a lot of work to be ready for the start of school so that teachers really come away, they actually leave this summer with information to guide them so that nobody's panicking and worrying, and have the first unit fully fleshed out. And we've discussed it as grade-level communities from all of the schools. And then in 4th and 5th grade, we want to really be certain to go through some of the authentic trade books that are in there, some of the titles, and make sure that they're developmentally appropriate for our students. And if we find a book that we just think is like maybe not the right match for our community, then we can, you know, look to write the unit in the same vein, but with a different trade book maybe. But that's six grades of full-year programming that we need time to kind of truly dive into and make teacher-friendly and appropriate. So that's why we were kind of thinking that if we slowly integrated the 4 or 5, but they would be a part of all of the professional learning starting this spring all the way through next year so that they're getting all of the pieces around how to structure the classroom and the routines and getting comfortable with the materials.
So 4 or 5 being definitely, they meet all the minimum state mandate requirements?
So the state mandate is really for K-3. You don't even have to do it for 4 or 5.
So just going to jump on 4 or 5?
Right. And we feel like we want to have continuity within our buildings, not have certain groups doing certain things. And we're able to kind of, to fund this initiative. And, you know, the numbers keep coming in here and there, up and down a little bit. But we have the $118,000 grant that we wrote for the science of reading from the state that we were granted. So we have a good chunk of it there. And then we had proposed money in next year's budget. So if everything goes well with that, that should help us to be pretty solid for this year and some other grant monies I can pull from. And then we'll have to obviously plan for some of the other pieces for next year, but this is the heavier of the pieces. And I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin. And I just have one other thing to mention that I forgot. With the legislation, there's also a piece around a universal screen, which is like an assessment to look at particularly dyslexia. It has to have certain components for dyslexia in it. And so we will embed that with our DIBL, with our benchmark work and add in the DIBL's assessment next year because that is the cleanest fit right now for Bookworms. So we were kind of waiting till we had all of the pieces in place so that we were like thoughtful that everything would connect. And now I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin just to highlight a little bit of the Bookworms. And then if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Hey, everybody. Thank you, Lyda. So if anything, we're going with the next slide.
Sure.
I don't know if you want to give me a mic. I know this is a good thing. So like Melinda said, we did survey families as well as staff. Last time I spoke with you, we talked about what the staff thought was very important to have as part of a literacy curriculum. And these are the results of what the families had to say. The top three most important components that families felt needed to be part of a new literacy curriculum were critical thinking and comprehension, explicit and systematic phonics, and grammar and writing instruction. And what I thought was really powerful about this is these are the exact same top three components that teachers felt were incredibly important in a new literacy program. So as Melinda said, it's been a very long journey of investigating and meeting with a ton of vendors and really digging deep and finding what we like and what we don't like about a lot of programs. And we ended up coming back to Bookworms constantly. We had one presentation from Bookworms, and we didn't really like the way it went at first. We invited them back for a second presentation with a curriculum specialist, and that really went very well, along with visiting a few different districts that currently use Bookworms, talking to a lot of district leaders and teachers that use this program. And everybody had great things to say about it, which made us more interested in digging a little deeper. What I will say about Bookworms is that it is specifically designed to expose students to a high volume of deeply engaging trade books, quality, authentic texts, which was really important to us because that's kind of what we are used to with our current curriculum. A lot of students, excuse me, students will read a lot of texts through shared reading with their peers and listen to a teacher's read aloud. And each time they read a text, they'll read a text multiple times, but with each time with a different purpose, which allows them to grow in their comprehension skill set. This program really prides itself on being content-rich, which is something that we would love to have as part of our program. So this program was written by Dr. Sharon Walpole. She's out of the University of Delaware. She has created this program along with many other professors at the university. And they use multiple districts in Delaware as studies. And what they found was great success. The students in districts in schools that used the Bookworms program made faster growth than the districts that did not use the program. So they were closing the gap a little bit. And they found that students that had IEPs, students that really struggled to learn, were making even more growth, which was really important for us to see as well. They are a nonprofit organization. So right now, if you go online, their curriculum is free. What we would be paying for would be professional development, the support of the company, printed materials, and the trade books.
And we feel strongly that with the trade books, in some districts, they just buy a few of them and students share. But we would like each child to have his or her own book. We feel strongly about that.
So the program is comprised of three 45-minute blocks. The first block is shared reading. And just like Melinda said, in this block of time, each student will have the same text in their hands, and they would be reading along with the teacher. It's called choral reading, which helps promote their fluency and reading rate. During the shared reading block, you'll see I kind of did a color coding task. Here, I like colors. The three goals or the three top components of the literacy curriculum that were important to families and to teachers, I color-coded on the bottom, you can see the key. And it has appeared in each section of the Bookworms program. So in the shared reading, students will have equitable access to challenging text, which is really important for us. Choral reading and partner reading, fluency building, comprehension, which was one of our most important components. Vocabulary instruction, word study, which is another important component for us. The word study component within shared reading would be for the intermediate grades 3 and up because we already have Ufly and Hegarty for our students in K-2. And it also contains a written response to text. So whereas we are very heavy with process writing currently, what this program does is has students respond to reading with writing, which is a lot of what we see on these big tests that we have, S-Back. They have to read a passage and respond in writing. And this is embedded throughout every single lesson, every single day with this program. The other 45-minute block is the ELA block, English Language Arts. During this block, students will listen to a read aloud from the teacher with a quality text. And then after this read aloud, then they respond in writing. Sometimes the teacher is explicitly teaching the writing component. Sometimes they are asked to write independently. Rich conversation and discourse takes place during this 45-minute block. Students will have to, they'll have a mix of read alouds and genre-based writing, like I mentioned. They'll have a variety of texts. There's also vocabulary instruction embedded within this block as well. The teacher is explicitly modeling throughout the lesson. And there's grammar instruction, which is one of our top priorities. And the third block of time is called differentiated instruction, DI block. And this is where you get the biggest bang for your buck. This is when every student gets exactly what they need. So it's 45 minutes of uninterrupted, small-group time. So if a teacher has 45 minutes, she might meet with a group of students for 15 minutes and then rotate into another group of students for the next 15 minutes. And those students are based off of an assessment. If we are going to be doing the DIBL's assessment, we would want to drill down our data. What do students need? How can I group my students to give them exactly what they need and make sure that they are grouped together during this DI block? And I can meet with every student every day and rotate them through. Foundational skills will be embedded during this block of time. And we will progress monitor and evaluate student success and progress constantly. So with Bookworms, and I just want to clarify, so Bookworms is not going to be 100% just the core curriculum. It's a program that we are going to use to go in line with what we currently have. So we currently have Hegarty, which is our phonemic awareness component. Ufly is our phonics component. And we would like to use Bookworms as our knowledge-building component. So all three components would equal our core curriculum. We would write that for North Haven Public Schools. So there's a lot of writing here, and I'm not going to read all this. So this is my curriculum PD rollout plan. And basically, it's just a roadmap. It's not going to be thrown at all teachers all at once. What I would really like to do is purposefully and carefully roll this out in a very thoughtful manner. It would start from training teachers in May. Ufly update and training, and also an overview of what Bookworms is all about and what to expect. And a discussion of what is your first unit coming up so that they can have time to prepare and think about this so that when they go home for the summer, they're not just coming back and feeling anxious and not knowing what they're going to do or see. And then throughout the year, I want to focus on meeting with every single teacher every month, and we would dig into each component of this new curriculum, followed by the building-level coach going in and then coaching the teacher on that very component. So it would be a very thoughtful process. Grades 4 and 5 would not be excluded from this. They would be included so that they are best prepared for when we roll out their curriculum as well. So this is our overall proposal for next full year. We would like to roll out full implementation of Bookworms for grades K through 3. Grades 4 and 5 would pilot one unit late fall. We would roll out DIBL's Full Administration K through 5. K through 5 teachers will all participate in professional learning, collaboration sessions, and instructional coaching. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to, I just want to interject one thing on this. And again, I remind you, because we've talked about this so many times, I feel like a broken record. But this is never how we would have approached selecting a program. So, you know, we took the choices that were put out before us and tried to do our best job of researching them all, digging into them, and selecting this one. But, you know, we have to get comfortable with this. And part of the work is going to be that we will kind of rewrite and shift some parts as our own curriculum. But in year one, we really just are kind of going through the program because we're in an opposite place than we normally are. But I think we have a really good energy around it, and we've been making our way through a lot of the K-3 materials thus far. It's the older grades that there's obviously more to read. The books are longer, so we just can only go as fast as we can go because we want to be intentional. We want to provide really solid professional learning and collaboration for teachers and make this really great opportunity for students, like not just have a disheveled mess coming their way. Because we have a lot of things that are working in district. We want to grow off of them.
Okay. Let's just start right down at the end, Michelle. Go ahead.
Couple questions. Besides for, you guys universal screen three times per year, right?
Yes.
Besides for iReady universal screening, because you said you're going to be rolling out DIBLs, do you use anything else for universal screening currently for reading?
Yes, currently, we use the Fontes and Pennell reading assessment.
We're going to make some tweaks to our assessment calendar to make sure that we're not over-assessing students. I am reluctant right now to give up the iReady because we've been using it for the past quite a few years now. We're seeing, it's really a nice tool for us to kind of see students' progress. And there's a lot of independent pieces that they're working on, and we see some really great success in students who are doing some of those things at home. And with all of this change, I want to have something to be able to look at our students over time. And I think that the iReady is the steady of that, right? So I want to be able to know that, you know, after implementation, particularly in the primary grades, like, are we not seeing what we had hoped to see? Or, you know, because we need to know that, right? We're going to comply and do what we need to do, but we also want to be smart about it.
You want me to keep going? So you also mentioned that there's three 45-minute blocks. Is that per day for this program?
Yes, it's per day.
So do those three 45-minute blocks also include Hegarty and Ufly? Or that's separate from that?
Yes. So in grades 3, 4, and 5, they would have the three 45-minute blocks. Grades K through 3 would have a little bit, or excuse me, K through 2, would have a little bit more. Because in the Bookworms program, they do have a little bit of phonics within their shared reading block, but it doesn't meet our needs. So we would take that piece out and plug in our Ufly. It would be a little bit more than 45 minutes. It would be roughly about 55 minutes for that particular block. But I have played around with sample schedules to see if this would work, and it seems to work with the sample schedule.
So that's like 2 hours and 15 minutes of reading per day?
Yes, yes. And also for the differentiated instructional block, the small-group block, if a student is not in need of some additional phonics or reading work, but they need some math support from the math interventionist, they can get that at that time as well. So it doesn't have to only be for literacy. And ideally, if students need to work with their special ed teacher, maybe the special ed teacher can pop in during that block too, to kind of get everybody to work together.
All right. I'm going to ask a basic question. Help the marketing professional here. What is a trade book? What makes, what's the difference between a trade book?
We should have clarified. It's like real books, kid books.
Authentic. There are some programs out there that hire writers to write for their program, and this is not that.
Like when you were in school, it was probably, we used to call it like an anthology. Do you know what I mean? It was like that big book and everybody would, yeah, me, you, all of us.
Basil reader.
All of us. And like when I first taught, that's what it was. And when we talk about the comprehensive program, which is the other choice we could have chosen, that one was that. Like they were old-school anthologies. The book is bigger than the kids. Like you're in kindergarten lugging this book around. It's not right.
Thank you so much. I had to, I had to get to that basic piece. Second part is a comment. It was good just in the marketing, just to see the diversity in the book selections there for Bookworms. What was meant by evaluating to see if it was appropriate for our community? What constitutes?
Okay, so I'm going to give you like a, just a really random example, right? So we check all the blogs and sites to see, you know, what other people are grappling with, right? And so, for instance, there was, there was one particular book that's actually a wonderful book. But we had spent some time at the middle school with that book in the past couple of years and deemed it that it was most appropriate in 8th grade. And it was in 5th grade. So the book itself is great, the themes are great.
Mature content.
Right. The content probably isn't the right match for our 5th graders. So that's kind of like the real tricky work of the whole thing, right? Because you would hope you could buy this program that's state-approved, and everything is beautiful, and you're just going to do it. But that's not the case.
That's not how it works.
Tell you something, Melinda has us reading.
I have everybody reading.
With specific criteria, looking through these books.
You all have had quite a couple of years of reading assignments.
Yes.
Then the comment about dyslexia. Is there an increase in diagnoses for students or?
I don't know if we've seen an increase yet, but there's new legislation that's requiring you to do screener so that you're catching students earlier to provide the proper intervention before it becomes too great of a problem, right? So if you could teach some strategies or ways to compensate how you're reading and seeing things, that's the intent of that piece of the legislation.
And I do want to clarify too, DIBLs will not diagnose a student with dyslexia. It will give us indicators so that we can provide support in advance before it gets that far.
It's like really to catch students early so that we intervene for early intervention.
Early intervention. And final question is, goes back to the budget. So I understand that there's a grant and et cetera. But if the budget doesn't pass?
So I have a contingency for that. It's not where I want to go really, but if that were to happen, we'll have to look at me writing next year's consolidated grants to kind of backfill that a little bit. That would be problematic because we use those funds for really essential roles, like interventionists and different things. But if that were to happen, I'll get very creative, and we'll look for every grant we can find and see what we can do. We feel strongly that, we visited a district, actually. We had a lovely visit, the people were wonderful. And we noted that the teachers, because we watched them at a lessons, they were speaking right from their computers, like almost like just engaged with the computer as opposed to the class before them. And because they, they didn't have the funding to buy the manuals per se, the teacher would just go on the free site and read from the computer, right? So, I mean, you could print it out too, but... So we want to be sure that we're giving teachers what they should have.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Marty?
I guess my main thought is you're trying to have all the students progress at the same rate. What provision? What provision is, is there a provision for a student who may be lagging behind?
Yeah, so I think all students are going to improve on their own rate. You know, I think we have to meet every student exactly where they are and provide whatever resources we have. Some students are going to progress a little faster than others and I think that's okay. We just need to make sure that we really look at our data and find exactly what they need and make sure that we use that 45-minute block to climb wisely and make sure we support that student as much as possible, all students, to make sure that they're progressing at an appropriate rate for them.
Thanks. So, very excited about this presentation. And I've been a little bit hesitant about the legislation. I think the, like the methodology behind the legislation is sound, but the legislation itself, eh. But when several people reached out, when several people read the agenda for tonight, I had three education professionals reach out and say, "Bookrooms is a great program." And one of them sent me an article from Forbes that was printed in February this year. Yep, and it focused on three studies with well over 20,000 kids involved. And the effect size for the math nerds among us, like effect size tells you like how significant the change is, was between a 2.26 and a 0.55 for these three studies, which is huge. Like that is significant.
I had that in my presentation, but I took it out. I thought it was too much.
Yes. We were trying to cut back. But you know what's super interesting about that is that article is based on the original rubrics that the State Department had kind of used to select any of the programs that are on the menu. And they like had to kind of come back and say like, "We didn't give this program as much due as we should have. It scored much higher. It's showing all of these pieces."
This one wasn't originally on the menu?
It was originally, not the very first time.
Not first.
Right, the second round it came on. But then they did like their own kind of State Department scoring and then they had to kind of go back and relook at that scoring, so.
I do think that the most exciting thing about this is the impact it seems to have in other districts on students with IEPs. Because it does seem to help the folks who need the help the most. So, I just want to say thank you and everybody else asked us my question, so thank you.
So, I'll start with what I think probably the easier questions that I have. Work up to it, I guess. The first, when you say grades four and five pilot one unit?
Yes.
Does that mean one fourth grade and one fifth grade class in the entire district?
Oh, no, everybody, right. The whole fourth grade in the district will do one unit, the whole fifth grade will do one unit. And we'll kind of time it out so that we kind of give them all the materials bundled up. And we're, you know, we said late fall and it could be, you know, somewhere between like after Thanksgiving and spring break, somewhere in there, like when we find a natural, right, a natural period of time.
That's what I thought, but then I get on my own...
That was a good question.
You said you visited, like you talked to districts. What are some other districts that are currently using the program?
So, in Connecticut, Marlborough and Derby, those are the only ones that officially adopted. But we spent a lot of time with Cromwell in particular because they're like in a very similar situation to us and we keep, and Coventry too. We keep going to the same little demo things together. So, they've actually become great critical friends to us. Because one of us thinks of like something we're worried about or we're not sure about, so then Caitlin has made great friends with them. And we've really met like lovely people in so many school districts during this adventure.
There are a lot of districts currently that are interviewing Bookrooms.
And has the feedback from the ones that we've talked to, I assume it's been relatively positive all the way around?
Yep. And right even in the very beginning, we have a teacher at Ridge and some other Ridge teachers were on our committee and they, you know, were sharing back and forth with her. And she used to work in Marlborough. So, before we even went on that visit, we had her call her colleague friends just for like the, we have no skin in the game, whatever it is, it is, right? Like, so to give us some advice and things that are working well and to talk about like from a teacher's perspective, what's tricky, what's good, what's not good, you know? Not that, none of these, I couldn't try to sell you that everything is good in any one of these. Like that's, it's just not realistic. We have to, we have to dig in, I think, and spend time making it our own.
So, and this, I guess, kind of goes, there's two questions kind of touch on the same thing, but it was mentioned, I was adding up too, but like we're talking about two hours and 15 minutes a day of language arts. How much time are we spending like right now in that subject matter? And then I guess, one of my questions was, this Bookrooms program, how different is it than what we're doing right now?
Yeah, so the, I'll answer one question at a time. So, the minutes, it would be roughly around the same exact amount of time as we're currently spending. K through three might be a few minutes more because we'd be adding in Haggerty and Ufly, which is a little bit more minutes. However, the differentiated instruction block, we can use that creatively, so it doesn't have to only be for language arts. We can embed some of math and other subjects into that time as well if we need to get creative. And currently, we have a workshop model, which is comprised of like a mini lesson from the teacher and then the students go off and work. This is a little bit different in the sense that it is more collaborative, more discussion based, and students get independent time during the DI block. So, it's more of a collaborative effort rather than student goes to work on their own, which would be the only difference.
I mean, when I'm hearing you talk about it, it sounds almost kind of like, more of like what the ID model was in some senses where the kids are working.
And there's actually like a little time for some project stuff that Caitlin's been working on the schedule for ID. And we brought one of the ID teachers from Ridge who wasn't originally on our committee. He teaches second grade. And we just wanted his perspective. So, when we went to Derby, we brought him with us because we knew he could look at it from all of the classrooms lenses, right?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think this is going to be the issue, right, based on what everything that you guys are saying, but we implement this and it's a spectacular failure, right? Like what is our backup plan if we don't like how it's working in our district?
So, then we're going to have to shift course. And, you know, that would be so disappointing if that happens, given the box we're kind of put in to make this decision, right? And we feel that this is the best decision before us. But if, and that's why I feel strongly about keeping iReady because I really want to be able to look at that data and know, you know, I don't want to just be thinking, put it away and then we have nothing to compare anything to. And if that were the case, then we're going to, we will have to plead our case and we'll have to go down a different path or we will have to maybe rewrite those units to mirror what, you know, I think that we'll love the books probably because they're just authentic, great kids books. But if it's not meeting our needs, we're going to have to, you know, shift and we'll have to think about that. I hope that doesn't happen, but I can't promise you, you know.
It would be hard to determine too, like year one, if it's not meeting our needs, you would need some longitudinal data. And there's a lot of evidence out there that you need to have a program for at least three years to see if it actually is working or not. So, I would really want to track this process very closely. And if it's not working, like Melinda said, we would have to go back to the drawing board and maybe I just re-interview all programs again and we start over.
And I think if we were at that place, which would be so unfortunate.
Yes.
But then I think, you know, we have a real leg to stand on to say, "We did what we were asked to do and we did it with fidelity and we tried to make the best choice we can given the constraints and this did not work for us. And here's our data to show you that that didn't work. So, now we need to have a different kind of conversation."
And the last thing, I know you're talking about the $118,000 grant and that we did put some money, being proactive in the budget, which hopefully will pass, that'll help fund this. But like what is, to put it in K through three next year, what are we looking at dollar amount for this program?
Would you say 260 roughly?
Yes.
Yes. And it might even be like a slight bit less if we don't buy all, because we're not going to buy all of the four or five materials probably right now. But that part we have to work out the specifics on. Because what we don't want is if there's a book we're not going to use in a particular grade, we don't need, you know, 200 copies of it. That's not, you know, and so sometimes we, instead of going through like a company, we'll just go through Barnes and Noble because we get a better price on the books and order them in bulk, so.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Of course.
I'm going to piggyback off of one of Joe's. The time of it, you mentioned that it's similar to what we do now. And it's not back to back because I'm trying to picture my son's schedule.
No, it does not have to be.
And they spread it out usually. Like his teacher sends us this really cute thing and we can see where everything is. She doesn't mention it. So, you mentioned ID. One of my questions was, how does this affect the ID classrooms? But it sounds like it's actually bringing the contemporary classroom more like ID or how's that going to work?
Yeah, so the, and then contemporary, I mean, excuse me, in the ID program, they have time for project. And a lot of, within Bookrooms, it gives them time for project. So, it would lend itself very nicely to the ID model. Exactly what that looks like for them, I'm not sure of yet. That would take some planning. That's for after this meeting if everything goes well.
Sure. I didn't know if they would, because they separate now for math.
Yes.
So, I didn't know if they'd have to separate now for reading also.
Yeah, I think it would be grade level and school dependent.
Okay.
But that's something that we'd be working on, yes.
So, with the books, because there's like a certain type of book for each thing, can we level them based on the student's level? So, like if, you know, are they all reading the same book or is it going to depend on where that student is for their reading level? Because now we level them.
Right, and that, that is the interesting switch around all of the philosophy and the legislation. Is it, it's different, you're not doing guided reading in the same way. But we will have opportunities to have students reading at their own independent levels too because that's how they'll stretch their literacy and their reading.
Yep, so it wouldn't have a leveling system. All students would have access to grade level texts. So, that's how the program's written. However, in that differentiated instruction block, that is when they will have access to exactly what is their level. So, it's more, a little more accessible at that point. But it will tell you, one of the shared reading lessons that Melinda and I watched in Marlborough, there was a room of students, and what we didn't know at the time is that it was a high level of ML students, multilingual, and a lot of students with IEPs. And every student was reading the same text. And you could tell some students were like, coral reading, but they weren't really reading exactly. But every student was accessing the same text. And when it came time for the discussion, every student participated. So, allowing them access to grade level texts allowed them to participate in high rich discussion, which was like super powerful. But yes, they will absolutely have a time for a material at their level during that small group time.
I mean, we do, I feel like we do that now. Where they're reading the same book. Even read out loud as the same booklet.
A mini lesson is always...
And they have that discourse discussion, but then there is time for...
Absolutely.
Like to really focus on each individual student.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so I mean, it sounds like it's a lot of what we're doing.
It's very similar.
Okay. I circled my question, sorry. So, the iReady.
Yes.
Are we planning on getting rid of it someday or are we just going to, because personally, like I love iReady. Because we get the reports generated and then like at conferences, we get that.
Right, I really like it too. And I also like that we have a platform for language arts and math in one.
Right.
Where like DIBELS doesn't offer us that. So, that's where we're leaning right now is that we would hold on those and take out some other assessments that maybe we're not finding as much value with. And that'll be some summer work to kind of go back and tweak the assessment calendar with that. But for now, we're going to keep iReady.
Yeah, and living with DIBELS a little bit will let us see how much time we're left with, you know, for assessments. We don't want to assess too much or do little.
And then last question, building on summer work. So, will the, the summer enrichment program that we have now, will it like be focused a little bit on this? Like this types of stuff in there to help them?
There's a possibility.
Yep, and we had talked about way back, but then like so many things went on with the program, like could we pilot this whole thing in our summer programs? But by the time we get things, you know, just, but yes, elements we'll be able to begin to sprinkle in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the only question I have is consumables. Is there a cost for consumables that we have to plan for each year beyond the initial price?
Yes, so we, in all transparency on that, we have, when I tell you like we just go round robin on different topics all the time. As we started to dig into the student workbooks, now many places don't buy them, right? The consumable part. And again, it's like the teachers are having to print it out, which we don't know that that makes much sense either. But what we're going to do is we're going to go through and we're going to just, part of our work as we roll out each unit and we've got some plans for like how we want to like tackle them, we're going to look at what materials should go in those units. And is it, like for this year, we're going to have them, but like did we not use them? Could we make our own and create our own little booklets? So, right now, yes, you have to buy them every year. I don't know if we'll tweak as we get more comfortable with it.
Because I think Bookrooms has a workbook for each unit, right?
Yeah, every unit, every student, every module.
Right. If you could have seen my office, you would have just...
Yeah, I know what it looks like. I can imagine, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I just basically have a statement. You know, I think the board really appreciates the diligence that both of yous put into this research and the presentation and the fact that we're all here just asking you questions off the cuff and that you have immediate answers and you're not really, well, we're not sure, you know, you have an idea of exactly how this program is going to move forward. So, I, we appreciate that. It's really, you know, ahead of time.
Caitlin has been amazing.
Thank you.
Well, it's obvious that you both put more than the time I'm sure you thought you were going to put in on it.
We spend a lot of time together.
Yeah, and that's, I won't ask you how that went. I'm just going to ask you, I'm just going to ask you how the research went.
And we'll, you know, we'll keep circling back to update you and like if we hit some speed bumps or roadblocks, talk about that. Like, we're going to do our, the very best we can to make this as smooth as we can and to do best for our students and our teachers.
And I would love to be a regular at CNI and like come with information about how things are going, just like Tracy did. I would love to do the same thing and keep you guys updated about every process that we're taking.
It just seems obvious you guys are ready to move on with it.
Yes.
And attack it and solve problems as they, as they come up. And I'm sure there will be, just because it's a new program. All right, so at this time, may I have a motion to approve the proposed CSDE, Approved Science of Reading K through five program selection compendium with Bookworms? Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No objections? So moved.
Thank you for the good dialogue and collaboration.
Thank you.
Caitlin, thank you.
Thank you for your support, everybody.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
You too.
Good night. We'll move on with the consent agenda. The retirement of Carrie Fleming, North Haven High School business teacher. The resignation of Michael Cantonese, North Haven High School business teacher. Resignation of Christopher Bassett, network administrator. The resignation of Catherine Ryan, TLS teacher at Mont Louis Elementary. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we get into some of the other things, I'd like to, and I'm sure Patrick and Melinda and the others would like to get in on it also, is to recognize the teachers. I know it's Appreciation Week and no matter what we say, no matter what we say would obviously not be enough. They do a tremendous job. They always look out for the best interest of our students. They make personal sacrifices to make sure that our students can progress and expand their knowledge base. And I just want to appreciate all the hard work. You know, mention that I appreciate all the hard work they do and that the board is here for you. If you have questions, concerns, or something you'd like to talk about, maybe help you out, or if you see a different way that maybe you'd like us to consider, please get ahold of Patrick or any of the board members and let us know. And we'd be happy to discuss anything. Does anybody else have anything you'd like to mention for Teachers Week? Go ahead, Michelle.
I would. So I'm obviously in a school, and the past couple of weeks have been appreciation days for lots of people. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize some of those that have passed since the last meeting. April 23rd was School Bus Drivers Day. I was happy to see in our report this month that drivers were, received treats and food and presents each day from the bus company in recognition of their hard work. They definitely deserve it. They do a job that most of us, I don't think, could ever do. And anyone who's ever chaperoned a field trip knows exactly what I'm talking about. So thank you to our drivers. April 24th was Administrative Professionals Day. When I first started college, a professor once told me in one of my classes that the most important thing I could do as a new teacher was to become friends with the secretaries and the custodians. And they were absolutely right. Secretaries are the backbone of any school. They have all the answers. They also have all the supplies. So thank you very much to our secretaries. May 1st was Principals Day. To have a great school, you need to have a great principal. I've met a lot of principals throughout my career so far, and they're all super dedicated to ensuring that our students and teachers are successful. So thank you very much to our principals for leading the way each and every day. May 3rd was Lunch Heroes Day for our cafeteria employees. Thank you for preparing healthy meals and our, for our students, navigating allergies, and doing it all with a smile. Yesterday was School Nurses Day, another job I don't think I could ever do. Last week, I was asked to cover lunch and recess for a classroom. And in those short 50 minutes, I had to send four kids to the nurse. And that was just from one class. So thank you for, for all of your busy and hectic days. And then of course, Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, teachers as a whole have impacted my life more than any other group of people. From the time I was young and in school myself, where multiple elementary school teachers inspired me to want to become a teacher, to middle and high school teachers that instilled my love of math, to master teachers and veteran colleagues who supported me as a brand-new teacher, to my children's own teachers, who right now support them every single school day to ensure that they're successful, and to colleagues of mine who have become my lifelong friends, because teachers are really just amazing people. So thank you for being kind and caring and compassionate and willing to do whatever is needed to help somebody. So, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to do that too.
Thank you.
So thank you to everybody.
Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, may I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's regular meeting dates?
I'll make a motion?
Give it a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We're gonna move on to the report of the standing committees. Marty, you got any from ACES?
Yeah, well, a lot of it was boilerplate for ACES, but they went over the review of the projects at Wintergreen School, which is 670 Wintergreen Avenue in Hampden. They're changing the configuration of the school around quite a bit at the media center and various other things. Looks very nice, but it's basically middle school activities. The same thing's true of Basset Street here in North Haven. They've started construction on that. And they're warning everybody about the fence that goes around the property right now to do that. They have a program called Access for Learning Disabled Individuals Over the Age of 21, which is expanding and going through some changes on that score. They had a visit to one of the Amazon centers, I believe around Hartford, where they brought several of the special ed students that they have. And they discussed the possibility of working at Amazon, either after graduation or possibly during summer program. And we also approved the 2425 Health Certificate, which is for food services, which I guess every school system ends up having to deal with. And the last thing they did, I have two things. They had a one-year retrospective, which I'll leave you. Of how things have changed. And they're having a early head start community brunch on May 17th from 11:30 to 1:00, if anybody's interested. Registration is due by Friday. That's what I have.
CIP?
We didn't meet, because we don't have our full committee. But in the fall, we're reserved.
Okay, we're good. Education Foundation?
Thank you. They, the foundation met yesterday, had a brief meeting. And really, my takeaway from the meeting is that they continue to look for new members. They appointed their, their E-Board at their annual meeting, but they're still looking for quite a few members. So if anybody in the community is interested in being part of a great organization that really supports our students, please reach out to me or you can go directly to their website and you can contact them through that.
Thank you. We have a couple of policy first reads. Policy 9323, Construction and Posting of Agenda. Policy 9326, Minutes. Policy 9325.1, Quorum and Voting Procedures, combining existing policies number 9325.1 and 9325.4.
So far. I apologize if I missed a couple.
I was gonna say, can we make that any smaller? My mic first, go ahead, hon. Policy 9222, Removal of Board Officers.
Here.
All right, now, I got.
Look.
It's more fun this way. Policy 9325, Meeting Conduct. And Policy 9321, Time, Place, and Notice of Meetings.
It was small.
So that is very small. Sure.
So on 9325, which is Meeting Conduct, there is an optional section in there that maps relatively closely to 9325.3, the current policy. And it just has, I think sections 1 through 3 are really in the government, that policy subdivision. Section 3 says, "No oral presentation will include charges or complaints against any employee of the Department of Education, regardless of whether or not the employee is identified in the presentation, applying or by another reference which identifies the individual." I'd like to suggest that we keep that language in the new policy, because I think it's, but at least if it says it's during public comment, like you can't bash.
Right, a particular person by name or description. Of course.
You can certainly send us feedback, but there's an appropriate time and place. And that's probably not public comment. And I would like to add a fourth point, if I may, that is similar language, but no oral presentation will include charges or complaints against any student in the district as well. So that way, we're covering employees and we're covering students in meeting conduct.
Yep. Agreed.
I can send you the text back if anything might be.
Good question.
Okay.
If the board has an agreement, it's something we can update for the second reading.
Right, that's what I was just gonna ask. All right, so all you need is that text from her. Are we all in agreement that we should add those? I mean, it's an obvious add.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, please, let's redo that. You know, ad hoc athletic committee?
We are going to send out a couple of dates over the next couple of days to get to that rhythm.
Perfect. Okay, super tennis report.
Thank you. Tyes, would you like to start with the DEIB report?
Sure, absolutely. So there's been a couple of meetings since our, our last board meeting. The one report I'm excited to report out on is that the DEI, the high school DEI committee, the student group has started a video, a belonging video. So they started the recording of that. They've gone out to all the schools, to, to those participants who, who chose to or who were selected, including elementary school students. So I'm excited to see what the output is going to look like. And it will be ready before the end of the school year. So this is pretty exciting. And, you know, our district deserves it. If other districts have the video, ours is gonna be amazing. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put a challenge out.
They just came down, let's not speak to them.
Oh, it just came, okay, all right. You know, I get a little competitive. There was another, the other piece is that we had an opportunity to speak to a consultant that focuses on DEIB. And there's some opportunities for some professional development for our administration. So looking forward to seeing what that's going to look like from a proposal perspective. But it was a really good discussion in terms of reframing how we look at DEIB, so not some of the language that we have heard over the past several years, just kind of contextualizing it and reframing it to be more aligned with how we speak about everything else. So I'm super excited to see that. Would like to at least acknowledge some observances for the month of May, which is ALS Awareness, AAPI Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, as well as Mental Health Awareness Month. This past weekend was Greek Orthodox Easter. We've got Cinco, I think Cinco de Mayo was Sunday, was also this past weekend. Okay, let's, there was this little, little conflict of interest there, but Cinco de Mayo and Greek Orthodox Easter are all on the same day. And then Memorial Day is upcoming at the end of the month. Just, we, just in terms of what's coming up for the month of June, we've got Pride Month coming up, as well as Juneteenth. So, any, I'm not sure if there's anything else I missed.
That's a great summary, thank you.
All right, thank you. Lots of.
So if the board doesn't mind, I have another not as fancy presentation, not as fun. But, so, we're gonna take a look at it. I'm gonna present a little information about the Professional Education, Professional Educator Review of Practice, which is just a fancy word for teacher and administrator evaluation system. We are updating ours in districts, so I'm gonna share a little information about the new updates. So this past school year, Melinda and I have been working with, with the PDEC Committee. And we have acronyms for everything in education. PDEC stands for Professional Development and Evaluation Committee. And we've, working to reestablish it. It did exist years ago. Took a break from it because we've had some leeway from the state due to COVID. And so the state came out with some new guidelines. And we need to, we need to update our evaluation system for admin and for teachers. So this update will allow us to focus more on teacher development, provide critical feedback, and really look at the growth of our admins and our teachers. So a while back, when we updated our vision of a graduate, we created our vision of a graduate in our rebooting our high school and middle school curriculum, we utilized Ed Advance as a consultant. They're similar to ACES, but they're up in the left-hand corner of the state, like the Litchfield area. And we'll be utilizing their services for consulting again to help roll out this program. And the people there are really knowledgeable. And the director, Jonathan Costas, was also on the committee to create the state model. So the model that we're rolling out to our staff is very closely aligned to the state model. Thanks, Ian.
Thanks, Mike.
So as you can see, nope, go back one. Thank you. So this is the Review of Practice statement. And you, just to pull out some of the key words, you can see improving practice and outcomes, high-level action research, and high-quality feedback. All right, thanks, Ian. So some of the core principles of the model, of the evaluation system, are providing feedback during the evaluation process, during pre- and post observational conferences, professional development and resources for teachers and administrators so they can improve their practice, reflective action to build self-awareness and provide specific feedback. And really, I, I like this one. It's, it's a little bit, a little bit of a change that I'll get into in a second, but focusing on things that matter as opposed to focusing on everything. What skills and outcomes are most important. And accountability, allowing teachers and administrators that space to improve their own craft and providing structures to help them grow and develop. Thank you. So in regards to standards, the new model will utilize the CCT rubric for effective teaching. Teachers and admins are familiar with this rubric. But instead of focusing on the entire rubric, there are four domains. There, there are a lot of indicators underneath it. We're only gonna focus on three, I believe, high lever, high leverage indicators, which will really help us improve student achievement. The goal-setting process with our teachers, in which I do with the administrators, has changed pretty significantly. So with this new process, goals can be set for one year, two years, or three years. Right now, we just do them for one year. And the goals can be done individually or collaboratively. So you can work with grade level, or you can work with your department, your science department, your, your English department. And administrators have the ability to group, as opposed to having the teachers have this goal for the entire year. There's cycles, so eight to 12-week cycles where they really focus. And so it's not for the whole year. So you can focus on the development, provide critical feedback, and then move on to your next group. The best part of it that I found is that even at the end of the year, if, let's say your cycle was the first couple of months of school, the admins are meeting with the teachers at the end of the year as well. They're not just done after those 12 weeks. So that's an important component of the, the new model. And for those of you who know TEAM, it's our, it's another acronym called Teacher, Education, and Mentoring. And the TEAM model is for new teachers. And new teachers need to complete TEAM in order to get tenured, and that's once you have your first couple of years. So this new evaluation model ties to TEAM. So you don't have to do TEAM and your evaluation. The, the new teachers can choose to align their goals. So it's really just very streamlined for them. So that's another bonus for our teachers as well. So before moving forward with this evaluation model, the PDEC Committee, I should just say PDEC, this season there, met to discuss and determine next steps. There was a general, a general consensus that this was the right model for us. And we're gonna begin training administrators, I believe, on May 20th. And, and speaking with Krista, and I thought it was great advice, she, she offered that, another opportunity for teachers not to be stressing out for something over the summer. We're going to use our last couple of half-days to provide them a quick overview of this new model. And then the, the true training will happen when we get back. Our admins will provide that training. They have the May 20th training, plus some, some work over the summer with Ed Advance so they can learn the model themselves and turnkey it to the staff. And really, the next goal now that we have this in place is to keep the PDEC meeting monthly, every six weeks, to make sure that we're staying on top of this new model, answer questions, and work on any case. That's really my, which will, any questions about the new?
Does anybody have any questions about it? Great, Michelle.
Can you tell me who was on the P, who's on the PDEC Committee? Is it, are there teachers on the PDEC Committee?
There's teachers on the PDEC Committee, there's administrators on the PDEC Committee, and central office administrators.
You had said that you wanna, using our last half-days of the year, give like an overview or training for teachers.
Not more than one, it may vary.
I was gonna ask, because I thought I heard the, the Bookworms presentation also say that they were gonna do some training in May, too.
We have different dates for that.
Okay.
At the end of May, sometimes we bring all of a certain grade level together for a two-hour block to do some work. So we're doing that, I think it's like the 28th, 29th, or 29th and 30th.
You had said that for goal-setting, I just want to clarify. So right now, teachers set goals for one year.
Mm-hmm.
With this new program, they may be able to set a goal that spans over one, two, or three years, right? Typically, one-year goals are tied to the students that you currently have. So like, do you have an example of what that might look like? If somebody did like a two-year or three-year goal?
So it may not be a classroom teacher. It may be a, a support staff member who uses, who utilizes that to look over their trend data that are, that have the opportunity to follow fourth graders to fifth grader, you know, and so on, so.
But then you also said something about eight to 12-week cycles. So is that, is that, is it the one, two, three-year goals? But then throughout the year, it would all run in eight to 12-week cycles where people are being?
In a way, yeah, yes. And then the admins will have the opportunity to have their, their end-of-year conference with them to check in, to see progress, and get ready if it is a multi-year goal for the following year.
So like right now, where you would have a goal-setting conference and a mid-year check-in, and then an end-of-year, you know, it would be slightly different because you'd have eight to 12-week cycles. Okay. I think that's it for me.
Somebody else have any questions? Sure?
So I apologize about this, because I'm private sector over here. We do less tighter feedback cycles in the private sector, too, so that feels normal to me. But it's interesting to hear that previously it was a full year. Can I just ask about the use of the term critical feedback? Which form of critical is that? Is that like meaning important to critical? Or is that meaning criticism?
It's not criticism. It's important, and it's to.
Meaningful feedback, maybe the better word.
And to utilize those, those high leverage indicators to really improve instruction.
Got it. And then, so I, I'm assuming that we're also providing positive feedback when it happens? And when teachers meet goals that are set throughout the course of the eight to 12-week cycles, do we? cycles, do we celebrate that in any way, like as folks are leveling up?
So within the buildings, I think the administrators have their way of celebrating that, and I will encourage that to take place in part of this new training that we have as well. These Ed Advance folks are very teacher-friendly, and they mesh well with us. They are a little far away, so they come from a distance. We have created a nice relationship with them, and they have a good feel for our staff, so we're excited to use them.
Is PDEC doing anything to kind of gather feedback from the teachers? Like maybe after those, maybe after a half-day session, is there like going to be a survey or something?
It probably won't happen when we have that informational session at the end of the school year, because opportunity to digest it the day before you leave for summer break is not always the best time to ask people for feedback on a new evaluation model. But as we jump into it, that'll be the goal of PDEC.
And just for like transparency, this is another legislative piece. We have to make this, we have to make a change to comply with the evaluation process. So, you know, if we were like choosing, we might not be choosing to do all these things at the same time, but that's out of our hands.
And one, can I jump back to your earlier question? I'm sorry to interrupt you. When you asked about the critical feedback part, a big component is being removed of the critical. We provide teachers ratings of their teaching currently in the state model to do so. That part is being removed, and it's focusing on the feedback, on the growth, on the relationship.
Okay, cool. Is there, is there an opportunity for bidirectional feedback, too, during these like feedback sessions, where teachers can also provide feedback to the folks who are evaluating, and just saying, yeah, I'm good about this, or...
Yes. That's the only way that that growth happens.
And typically, after like an observation, there's like a post-conference where that's exactly what you talk about, like went the way you thought it should go, and what didn't, and how did you adjust? And it's very much a dialogue, because that's where the learning is.
And teachers have opportunities to upload or to share their documents and say, this is why I did what I did, this is why I spoke to this kid or taught this kid in this manner, because there's the data. And so they have opportunities to justify it.
Somebody else?
I just have curiosity questions. Is there, like, how long was the current, I'm going to call it performance evaluation? I know that's not what it is, but the, how long have we been using the current one we're using?
Maybe eight years?
Okay.
I'm guessing.
I think it's actually, I was...
So it's not something that we're changing constantly?
I was trained in Stratford when I was there. So I've been here nine years.
Right. I was going to say, nine or, yeah, maybe about 10, yeah.
And is there an opportunity for students to give feedback of teachers? And I'm sure students would have some really great things to say about their teachers that could be taken into consideration for the teachers?
Not within this model. Unless a goal is set up around that by the teacher. So that's the problem.
And then all, so every, you said every month or two-six weeks, this rubric gets assessed, and then they'll get compiled like at the end of the year, and the student, then the teacher can review them. Is it going to be like transparent to the teachers what's being written?
Very, yes. Yep. The platform is, we actually, we use a platform now that is not very friendly to either teachers, administrators, or anybody trying to read it. And Jen will be creating the platform for us this year. Actually, this year is because we're in a kind of a waiver year.
We're in a hybrid right now.
She created one, but it's just kind of an in-between. The old platform we used was kind of a difference.
That's awesome. She should patent it.
We want to keep her.
That's very cool that she created that platform.
Anybody else?
Can I just ask?
Three.
So that was my end of...
Okay.
I just wanted to share as a quick reminder, last day of school is scheduled for Friday, June 14. Graduation is June 13, that Thursday. And the final three days of school, our early dismissal is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of that week, and a communication will go home tomorrow evening, just to let everybody know.
And the Friday before Memorial Day weekend is a half-day as well.
Yeah.
We did that last year.
Yeah.
We'll redo that. It's like a thank the teachers thing.
Your fault.
I can do that.
Can I ask one more question? Just about the, you had said about the three high-leverage indicators that they're going to be focusing on. Originally, it was like the CCT rubric with the four different domains. Are those high-leverage concepts coming from those domains?
Yes.
So you're just picking like...
No, they're actually picked for us. We don't pick them.
Okay.
They're within domain one and domain three.
What program, what platform were you using?
We used what was Bloom Board.
That teacher's import, Bloom Board?
Bloom Board, yeah.
Evriflex.
It was Evriflex, thank you.
But you're going to something that's created within house?
Within district.
Okay.
Well said.
Thank you.
May have a motion to approve the implementation of the professional educator review of practice. You get a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to add something also. Has to do with Teacher and Nurse Appreciation Week. On the past, we've always given the Friday before Memorial Day weekend as a half-day. So I'd like to make a motion to make the Friday before Memorial Day weekend a half-day. Anybody would like to second that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. So half-day, day before Memorial Day.
With professional development until five p.m.?
That's on you. Intern Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Overall, my report is relatively short, because this time of year is where we hunker down. As was alluded to before, we're not too far away from Memorial Day, and the magic number in the budget world is June 30, 2024. And so I have included in here both the monthly Munis April financial report, as well as where our reserve accounts do stand. But our team, our business and operation team is really hunkering down at this point, making sure that we're reporting out on any open purchase orders that we can now close to identify savings and begin to identify possible balance transfers to address negative balance lines where they stand at this time. So I do want to pause and see if there are any questions on that portion of my report at this time. With that being said, you do see where our reserve accounts do currently stand at this time of year. I've also, as I started doing last month, started attaching our reconciliation spreadsheets because those reserve accounts are held on the town side, and we do have to request the reports from them and reconcile them appropriately on our side as well. Mr. Hipsher has also attached his monthly transportation report for the month of April. While I personally may not be able to respond to any questions, I would be happy to forward any questions you have regarding Mr. Hipsher's report directly to him at this time.
Question. According to the report, it appears like they're fully staffed. Possibly, it looks that way. I've heard that some of the buses are still extremely overcrowded. I was wondering if it might be possible to find out how many are supposed to be on each bus, or how many kids are on each bus, and if there might be a way to adjust for some of the buses that seem to be extremely overcrowded, if there's others that are less overcrowded?
I can present that question, though.
So any other questions for M&amp;J?
I'd love to know, like, the average time it takes to clear the buses. I don't know if that's a metric that's tracked, but just like as we're getting into being fully staffed, I just want to understand if fully staffed is like a good experience for our kids, or if it's taking like an hour and 15 minutes to clear.
So we can look back at actually our text messages. The four of us get an all-clear text message every day.
Nice.
So we are, on average, four fifteen, four ten?
Yeah, we're actually coming down closer to like four or five, four or five.
I mean, it ebbs and flows some days, but...
Which is reasonable for it to ebb and flow, but I do think that contractually, I think it's supposed to be, kids are not supposed to be on the bus for more than, I think it's 45 or 60 minutes. But I just want to keep an eye on that.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? So you get an all-clear at the end of the day when elementary school is done, but some of the overcrowding seems to be on the middle and high school buses. So do you know how long those are? I mean, I guess that would back up elementary school.
Correct.
In a sense, but I'm wondering, like, I feel like that's where I'm hearing from people, that there's a lot of overcrowding or long trips. So I was curious to know if you knew that as well for middle and high school.
Okay, thanks. And then finally, just short and sweet in regards to cafeteria and food services, overall participation continues to be very high. Right now, we're looking at, as of right now, this does not include this month's sales or June, which obviously is relatively light. But the food program right now has an overall profit of approximately $89,000 in the cafeteria fund year-to-date.
Have you heard anything back from the state as to whether or not...
That was my question? No, go.
So following last meeting, I called our state rep, and he said, can you have the contractors submit a more written analysis of why you are planning the project as such? I received that write-up from Schaefer and Beacon at the end of last week and submitted it back to the state. I received an email from the state that they were submitting it back to their committee to review again.
That's good news.
I can't promise, but...
This time, I'm also going to reach out to Senator Chigarella and Representative Yacarino, just to let them know where we stand and see if they can help us out, because they have in the past in different situations.
That concludes my report for the season.
He's on a session. Yesterday, I think, right? He's on a session now. Well said. Thank you, Christian. I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report, including the recommended transfers. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Intern Director of Student Services report.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I wanted to take a few moments to highlight some of the outstanding work that we're seeing within the district within the past month. Very exciting time. On May 1st, we held our first annual Pizza on the Playground at Clintonville Elementary School for our students currently enrolled in the ILS program, moving from Ridge Road. It was a beautiful evening, full of a lot of great energy, good community connections, and all of the kids seemed to have a lot of fun. So it was just, all in all, a wonderful time. I just have to say, I can't thank our leaders and our support staff enough. A big shout-out to Mrs. D'Angelo, Building Principal, Mr. McLaughlin, Building Principal at Ridge Road, Mrs. Christie Scanlon, Coordinator of Student Services for elementary level, and the classroom teachers, Mrs. Margaret Johnson, Ms. Jess Barlam, and Ms. Ashley Guerrero for being there and their continued partnership and a support to help elevate this important process and change for our students. There were also many other staff members from Clintonville that came to support, and I thought that just showed another sign of positive community. So all in all, a very wonderful opportunity, and I'm very thankful. Adding to that, the ILS program will be changing their names, so it's a little more user-friendly, if you will, to reflect our students and allow us to program a little bit more inclusively. So the program name is going to change to RISE, R-I-S-E, and it stands for Reaching Independence Through Structured Experiences. So just making that a little bit more kind, user-friendly, and again, that inclusive piece of it. We're going to work on creating a logo, and the students will have an opportunity across the district to submit some drawings and be able to contribute to that piece of it and vote on that as well. So trying to make it as much student-led and driven as possible. One other exciting thing is Laura DeSanto, Coordinator of Special Ed for Grade 6 through Transition Services, and she's also our Transition Coordinator. We have been working closely to design and implement a resource fair for fall of 2024, date to be determined. More information will come. What we'd like to do is invite local community members, agencies, educational partners, and transition services, which include post-secondary opportunities for students, to provide a wide range of information for families and support, help them to build a support system. The services, excuse me, the evening opportunity will be open to everyone, and it will be geared towards pre-K to transition, so there'll be many opportunities available. And the primary focus is to support students that have an IEP or 504, but again, everybody is welcome to see what types of services are available. We will continue to provide more information as this exciting opportunity unfolds. Of course, I have to put a plug in for May's Mental Health Day as a counselor by trade, so I just want to thank all of our support staff members from across the district, in addition to our school-based health clinicians, for supporting not only our students, but our staff and the community at large. The support provided will never go unnoticed, and it is really a critical component to allow our students to reach their success, not only within the school, but within the community. So the last piece I always have to add in there is please make sure to take care of yourself, very important, and know that there's help available if anybody needs that extra layer of support. May is also National Speech Language Hearing Month, so thank you to our speech and language pathologists across the district that support our students in accessing their true potential and helping them rise to success. And last but not least, obviously, we have lovely Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you to all of our teachers and staff that support, but also School Nurses Day. I know it was mentioned earlier, but thank you to our nurses throughout the district that do so much for our students and staff each day. And I appreciate all of your support, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions for Anthony? Off the hook, Anthony.
There we go, I'm off the hook.
No questions.
Thank you.
We're going to, thank you. We are up for a public comment. If anybody has any comment that they would like to make based on agenda items, please come on up, your name, address.
Hi there, I'm Brandy Mandato, 56 South Avenue. I am a mom, a PTA room captain, and a taxpayer. The most appropriate and best way to appreciate our support staff, our teachers, our leaders in the district, the folks that are responsible for our country's greatest asset, our students, is to fully fund public education. And I would ask that folks, please come out and vote for the referendum on May 21st. I would also, considering that North Haven ranks at the bottom in terms of our DIRG, or close to the bottom in terms of our DIRG, and the percentage of our budget that is comprised of state funding, to challenge our representatives to bring more funding home to North Haven, so that we don't have to choose between things like an effectively-funded fire department and our children's futures. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? I would just like to make one comment before I ask for adjournment on the budget. Patrick, Christian, the board, and others, all the administrators, everybody who helped form this budget, did an absolute tremendous job trying to create a budget that gave the student everything they need to proceed and grow without taking anything away. We are also implementing, as we saw today, pilot programs, the K-5 reading, full day for four-year-olds pilot program. We are not instituting any pay-for-play. We're not looking to cut any programs, music, theater, club activity, anything. It's been difficult, to say the least. But we believe that this budget allows for the right amount of growth without really choking ourselves, without being so flush that we don't have to worry about anything. It's right in that little comfort level, right in the middle. And it is super-important that people get out to vote, and it's also super-important that if you have a question and you're leaning one way or the other, you know, we're apolitical, so it doesn't matter to me if you're Republican or Democrat or Independent. If you have a question about the budget, you have an opportunity on the 13th to pose that question again, and to keep asking it until you get the answer that satisfies you. We have been very, very visible, and we try to make sure that everything we've done has been out there and open for interpretation by the viewer. And we think we have been as lean as we can be. Some people may disagree. I'm sure more agree. From what I'm hearing... agree. From what I'm hearing, people are kind of in agreement with what we're doing. And we are really on the brink of being a school that is so solid and so successful. I would hate to see that we have to go back in and start to subtract again, and you don't know where those subtractions are going to come from. So it's important that you get out to vote, and let's get this thing passed. With this, may I have a motion to adjourn the May 9th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education? So move. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting is in August. August.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Because we fall on graduation day.
Okay.
And then July is no form. So second Thursday in August. August. Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.